For y'all, those who may not have seen the schedule, there'll be visitation for David Ferguson's brother this Friday at Miller's Funeral Home. And the service will actually be Saturday at 1:00 in New England Word Services.
Love him.
Yeah, love him. Appreciate y'all remembering and keeping these families in your prayers. Okay, adoption agenda as printed, will input from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Good evening Superintendent Milstead and board members, as well as the public and other officials. I'm Gina Jones. I'm both a parent of two special needs children in the public school system, as well as an attorney for free IEP assistance and disciplinary assistance to students in our community, and take very seriously special education in our parish. I come to you tonight because I've requested to be put on the agenda. And after meeting with Mr., I'm sorry Superintendent Milstead, as well as Assistant Superintendent Lisa Bastian, was denied my request. I wanted to speak to the board about the potential liability that you were facing. I think this, the current special ed system is in violation of both state and federal laws. And I think you face significant potential liability due to those violations. I've been an adopted school partner since my children entered school. That sounds like my wheelchair-bound child coming this way. And my ex-husband Louis Jones, I believe some of y'all know, were adopted school partners of the year one year. So we are proponents of public education, and I would like to be heard. If the board chooses not to hear me, because I understand it has to be by unanimous vote, then I will have no choice but to go to the media and Bessie. And I hope it doesn't come to that.
Okay.
I'm at the motion that we hear on this issue.
Yeah, the motion by Lisa Best, second by David Abrams, that we hear Ms. Jones. Any other input from the public on this matter? Input from board members?
I have a question.
Okay.
Ms. Jones, did you go through the correct procedure to be
Yes, sir.
recognized tonight? You went to the teacher, the principal?
Actually, I'm not here about my daughter at all. I'm here about the parents that I offer free assistance to, and about problems in the system in general. But I could go through the procedure of making a written request to Mr. Milstead, as well as getting his letter of denial.
Okay. Question? All right, we've heard the motion second. If you're in favor of hearing Ms. Jones' right, you're ready to go on this. Okay, roll call vote then? Yes, that we will hear Ms. Jones, and no, we will not.
Linda Henderson?
Yes.
Hunter Smith?
The wheels swirl around and round.
Otha Anders?
Yes.
George Mack?
Yes.
Debbie Abrams?
Yes.
Danny Hancock?
No.
Mike Barnmore?
No.
Susan Wiley?
Yes.
David Ferguson?
Where we are where, where we are where.
David Galat?
No.
Lisa Best?
Yes.
Joe Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, has to be unanimous vote. There were three noes on this, or four, okay, excuse me.
Who were the four noes? I'm sorry, I didn't hear about my child.
George Mack, Eric Rongerout, Danny Hancock, Mike Barnmore, and David Galat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would encourage you, though, to continue your communication with Mr. Milstead and the staff.
We'll see.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving, okay. So now we can adopt agenda as printed, sort of changes. Motion by Otha Anders, second by David Galat. Any questions, further questions of this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, motion carries. This agenda is adopted as printed. Approval of minutes in the regular session of September the 3rd, 2019. Whether acceptance is printed. Okay, motion by Mike Barnmore?
Second.
Second by Lisa Best. All those in favor say aye. And the opposition, motion carries. Approval of minutes, I mean the minutes are approved as printed. Recognition of National Merit Semifinalists. Ms. Bonnall?
We are ready. This year, the Lincoln Parish School District proudly celebrates a Ruston High School senior as the only Lincoln Parish student announced as one of approximately 16,000 semifinalists in the 65th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. This represents roughly 1/3 of the highest scores among the approximately 1.5 million juniors in roughly 21,000 high schools entered in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. And of course, this is based on the student's performance on the SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. This nationwide pool of semifinalists represents less than 1% of all United States high school seniors. And I think you will agree, we have another superb honoree, now noted among such an elite group. And she is someone who we proudly presented to you earlier in the summer as we celebrated her perfect ACT score. President of the Future Business Leaders of America and Editor-in-Chief of the Chatterbox, Amanda Mung, is also a council member for the National Honor Society. A member of Temple Baptist Church, where she is an assistant Sunday School teacher, and has participated in mission trips to both Canada and Los Angeles. She also plays the piano at the Russ House weekly, and participated with both March of Dimes and the Children's Miracle Network fundraiser. A brilliantly talented pianist, Amanda earned first place honors in the state piano rally, was a performance winner in the Louisiana Music Teachers Association, and the recipient of its Outstanding Achievement Award. In addition, she earned National AP Scholar honors, was first place overall winner in the entire state in Calculus II at the state literary rally, and placed 5th place across the country in the Community Service Project Competition at the National FBLA Conference this summer. With a 4.571 GPA, I didn't know you could do such, and a perfect ACT score of 36. As you can imagine, she plans to attend college following graduation. And I'm delighted to say she will major in a STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics field before going on to medical school. Amanda will now continue in the competition for some 7,600 National Merit Scholarships worth more than $31 million. And they will be offered next spring by submitting a detailed scholarship application in which she provides further information about her academic record, participation in school activities, demonstrated leadership abilities, employment, and honors and awards received. Amanda will be expected to show an outstanding academic record, that's done, throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by a Ruston High School official, write an essay, and earn SAT scores that confirm her earlier performance on the qualifying test. Over 90% of the semifinalists will likely attain finalist standing, and about half of the finalists ultimately win a National Merit Scholarship and thus earn the Merit Scholar title. Therefore, it is my distinct pleasure and privilege to congratulate this outstanding young lady on her exemplary academic performance, as well as the splendid banner in which she represents the Lincoln Parish School District, and certainly wish her the very best of luck as she continues in this prestigious competition. I would also like to offer my congratulations and appreciation to her parents, Dave and June Mung, because it was just five years ago that we were in this exact same position, recognizing their son Austin for the very same honor. This district certainly appreciates the ongoing investment that parents and family members continue to make in their children's education, and therefore this district's success. So, ladies and gentlemen, I am thrilled to present to you this year's National Merit Semifinalist from Ruston High School, Amanda Bond.
So I'm very honored to have received this award today. And if anything, from what I learned today at school, we discussed how Isaac Newton once said that if he had ever accomplished anything, it was because he stood on the shoulders of giants. And I'd like to recognize that I stood on the shoulders of a lot of people who helped me get this far. The teachers and counselors at Ruston High School, who have always been like invested in my academics and pushing me to accomplish whatever I could in the school. And then especially the school board for allowing me to further my education in whatever way possible. Especially Mr. Milstead, who's always been supportive of whatever my family and I have tried to do. And of course, I'd like to thank my parents for always teaching me the value of hard work and allowing me to work as hard as I, teaching me to work hard to achieve my goals. And of course, I remember five years ago, sitting in this room, like Ms. Cathy mentioned, while my brother received the same award. And he's always been one of my academic role models to remind me of what I could accomplish if I just did my best. Thank you for having me tonight. And Ruston has been this community that has helped me grow throughout. I've grown up here, it's helped me mature in a way that I don't think I would have been able to accomplish in any other community. Thank you.
I want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to recognize another one of our outstanding students. I wondered if anyone has a word or two they'd like to share with Amanda before she slips out? Nothing like putting them on the spot, right?
I've been reading the Chatterbox, been the Ruston Data Leader, so good job on that. And good luck in your future endeavors wherever you end up.
Thank you.
I would like to say that we are very, very proud of you and for you in how well you have represented our district. How well you've represented our city. And we know that you will continue. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you and your family both. And I know y'all are proud of your daughter, but also Lincoln Parish is proud too.
Yeah, I just want to add to that how proud we are of Amanda. I mean, I remember when you were kind of this big, and your brothers were dressed in high. So thank you for all your accomplishments. Dr. Ms. Mung, thank y'all a lot for supporting her in that process. And of course, they are some of our best representatives and ambassadors for the Lincoln Parish School Association. So thank you, thank you for your daughter, your children, and all that you've done for our district. And Amanda, congratulations. Your expression.
Super. Before I yield the podium to the regular scheduled business, I just wanted to thank those board members that were able to join us today. And then we had the largest kickoff for our adopted school program that we ever have. And it was so exciting to see half of our board members there. So important to our teachers and administrators to see, you know, a busy, active board, as well as our community. And I know it's hard to slip away from work. It's hard for me at times to do that too. But thank you so much for your diligence and for your support. It means the world, and it just, it's helping us to continue to grow. And so I encourage you to keep that up. And again, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you for all you do with that. Okay, moving into unfinished business. Consider resolution calling an election authorizing the levy of a 0.5% sales and use tax and for other related matters. Ms. Juanita Do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Do. Just continuing the announcement that was made at the last board meeting, we're here today to present the resolution, to have to call the election that is going to be held on May the 9th, for the 1/2 cent sales tax. Advertisements have been made, more and accordance of law will be made after, if the board should adopt this resolution to make this call. And also, the legislative delegation of Lincoln Parish has been notified and informed of the, in accordance of law, of the, of this special call. So with that, we do have our bond counsel, Grant Schutter, with the Farm Council of New Orleans, here to present that resolution to you. And to answer your question, you have the process of making the call.
Thank you, Juanita. Grant Schutter with Fuller Udel, bond counsel. You have the resolution before you calling for the election. The election will be held Saturday, May 9th, which is a regular election date. The proposition provides by 1/2 of 1% sales tax in perpetuity commencing July 1, 2020. Estimated amount to be received from the tax is 4.6 million per year. And the purpose is giving additional support to the public, elementary, and secondary schools in the parish, including, but not limited to, one, providing enhanced security at all public schools and facilities in the system, including a school resource officer at each school, which school research officer shall be a commissioned law enforcement officer. And two, salaries and benefits of teachers and other public school employees. That's the primary purpose that's listed in the proposition that would be submitted to the voters. The resolution further provides that you will meet in special session following the election on Tuesday, May 12th, at 6 o'clock PM to canvass the returns. And we need that early date in order to make all the filings with the state and local officials following the election. So it's a little quicker than you normally meet in order to canvass the returns. And that's basically the text of the resolution. If you have any questions, be happy to, be happy to answer them.
I have one. I'm reading the September 25th memo from Juanita Duke. And it listed four different things on there. The resource officers, school safety, but that's one thing. The additional salary increases for teachers. And then on this memo, it mentions financial support for increasing employer health plan costs. And then residual would be used for things like technology instructional programs. I didn't hear you say that when you were reading what you said and what I'm seeing here.
That is covered in the beginning of the purpose, which is giving additional support to the public, elementary, and secondary schools in the parish, including, but not limited to, and then you have, one, the SROs, and then number two, salaries and so forth. My understanding is the bulk of this money will be allocated to those two specific purposes. But there does need to be an additional lead-in that prevents you to use any excess monies in excess of those two purposes for the other purposes that Juanita outlined in that memo.
I'm just thinking that if we're going to ask the public for these things, it would be good if the public understood item one, item two, item three, item four from Juanita's memo versus looking at this broader definition that you're talking about that's going to be in the public.
One of the problems is state law now provides you cannot exceed 200 words in a proposition. Juanita, I believe we're at 190?
We're really close.
We're very, very close to it. So we tried to fashion this and put as much as we could in the proposition. It used to be that we had no limit on the length of a proposition. The legislature cut it down to 400 words, and now they've cut it down to 200 words. So we have to live within that restriction.
Well, my personal opinion is it's a little bit convoluted with what you're saying and what Juanita is saying. And I think as board members and employees here in the central office, we need to do a really good job of helping the public understand that it may say broadly two, but we mean four. And as a board, I would encourage us to rally behind that and make sure that our constituents know, and our, the people that are going to be voting for this half cent sales tax would know, that we are indeed handling it in the manner in which Juanita has said. It's just confusing.
That's the unfortunate thing. With the 200-word limit now, school boards and other public bodies necessarily have to put out in brochures and informational packets all of the details of how they intend to spend that money? Because we simply can't fit that within the 200-word state law maximum.
I understand. And I think too, once the board has a budget in front of them, and we specifically say these dollars are being spent for these items, and there'll be verification for sure. And so of course, the budgetary process is important for us to follow through on. And so then we'll get very specific with the process.
And I know over the years, this board has been particularly careful with putting out informational brochures and other information in public meetings. The details are great, has a great amount of detail on exactly how you're going to spend the money.
Okay, further comments from board members? Public? Ms. Smith?
With, with all of these candidates running for sheriff, every one of them is saying that they're going to put post-certified law enforcement officers into every school in Lincoln Parish and do some other things towards security. Now why would the board ask for money to do the same thing?
We asked for this before the candidates for sheriff had even announced. We'd been talking, began talking about this. So, and that is only about 11% of the total request. And so that 11% can go to security even if we don't, if the candidates all pledge to, and we actually see 13 school resource officers in all of our schools, then any dollars above and beyond that can be spent on security. And those would be dollars that we will use over an extended period of time to make our schools as secure as possible.
Even though you're saying 11%, like that's not anything. But you are duplicating in your call, you're duplicating what these candidates are saying they're going to do. You are double dipping.
I'm just saying that in the process, we've done this process, we're going to stick with the process. Any dollars that are left over, we will spend on school security.
And there's a partnership there too. They give, we give.
Well, I understand partnerships, I understand the call. But because they, you all started talking about it first. I guess you think we citizens are first-rate students, and we don't understand that you're duplicating spending money for services that's already being taken care of.
But they haven't been.
And you all haven't either. You got, you got it in the call. They, they are providing some SROs and school protection, and leading buses to ballgames, and everything else for these schools in Lincoln Parish. And now you're asking me to vote positive for this, and it's already being done.
At any given time, we have six schools without an SRO in it. And so we're asking to pay the salaries of six or seven additional SROs to make sure that every school, every day, all of them, has a school resource officer. But today, you could have gone to six of our schools, maybe seven, and there would not have been one there, because we're spread so thin. We have more schools than we have SRO officers.
Has that been talked over and to and about with the candidates that's running for sheriff and including the present sheriff?
Have I talked to each one of them personally?
Talked about this proposal you are putting before the people, or proposing to put before the people.
Yes, only one of those has come sat in front of me and said that they are willing to commit to SRO officers. But that was before, there is a process, and Mr. Schutter can tell you, we've started this process a long time ago. So we can't just wait till today's board meeting to do all of the initial steps. I think we started this back, Grant, probably in summer sometime.
That is correct. It's a very lengthy process.
You have to go by the schedule designated by the state committee. And so today is the next step. And so if we don't go today, then it's a problem. So this has been ongoing.
But this is not a problem when you talk about 11% going for what's already being taken care of.
It's not being taken care of.
It's not what?
It's not being taken care of.
We don't have SROs?
There's six schools without SROs at any given time. About every day.
So it's going to take that 11% to take care of those six schools?
Correct. We need $450,000 to pay for those six.
Are you spending any money on it now?
Yes, the amount that we contribute now, the sheriff's office contributes 80% of the salary value to the present SROs, the present school board pays 20%. I think that percent is about right.
But in a dollar figure, I don't know what the total amount is. And 20%, they tell me anything.
I can get that for you.
All right.
Can we add a comment in the back, Ms. Smith?
I was, I just tell Mr. Smith, candidates make promises that they don't carry through.
You seem to vote for them on their promises.
Well, that's true. But when they get in office and they get to looking at their budget, you know, they may not even do it. You know, it's, it's easy to say it.
And when I get to looking in my pocket, then you know I might not be able to do it. But you're trusted on it.
Really, this board is not though. This board is just saying that we're going to allow, hopefully allow the citizens of Lincoln Parish to make a decision about whether or not they're willing to act. So the board only says, let's call the election and sell the election, for the citizens of Lincoln Parish will make the decision.
Thank you.
Okay, further comments, questions? Not, we'll have a motion to accept this resolution authorizing this election?
I see one.
Motion by Hunter Smith?
Second.
Second by Mike Barnmore. We have a roll call vote?
Linda Henderson?
Yes.
Hunter Smith?
Yes.
Otha Anders?
Yes.
George Mack?
Yes.
Debbie Abrams?
Yes.
Danny Hancock?
Yes.
Mike Barnmore?
Yes.
Susan Wiley?
Yes.
David, excuse me, David Galat?
Yes.
Lisa Best?
Yes.
Joe Mitchell?
Yes. 11 affirmatives, yes, and one absentee. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, accept the bid for the Ruston High School Light and Pole Project. Mr. Peyton, thank you, Mr. Schutter.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, as the background indicates, we opened the bids for the light poles and lights at Ruston High on September 17th. We had two qualified bidders, the amounts are listed. And after reviewing the bids, the district administration recommends to the board to accept the bid of $146,000 submitted by All Britons and award them as the contractor of the Ruston High School Light and Pole Project.
Okay, you've heard the recommendations, awarded bid to All Britons Service Company for $146,000. Any questions from Mr. Peyton? Questions from the public? Board members?
Mike, the motion, Mr.?
Motion by Lisa Best?
Second.
Second by Danny Hancock. All those in favor, say aye. And the opposition, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to have a football game, and that's taking me at this year.
I'm not going to say anymore. I get in trouble every time.
No promises.
No promises. Proof policy manual revisions and additions. Ms. Bastian?
Yes, sir. Last month, the board were, you were given two policy revisions and one new policy. And this month, we're asking for you to approve those.
Okay, two additions on service animals and behavioral health services for students, and one new, new policy, Special Education Advisory Council. All right, motion by David Galat, second by Otha Anders. All those in favor, say aye. And the opposition, motion carries. Thank you. Accept the bid for Simsworth Parking Lot. Mr. Peyton?
Okay. Again, we opened the bids for the Simsworth Parking Lot on September 12th. We had four bidders. You remember from previous board meetings that I told you that this is going to be a 49-space parking lot. It will be a concrete parking lot, and it will be paid for from the M&amp;O funds, maintenance, operations funds, and Simsworth School. So after reviewing the bids, oh yes, one other thing. It, the amount was below, well below what we expected this parking lot to cost. So our recommendation to the board is to accept the base bid of $162,500 submitted by Triad and an alternate bid of $52,500 submitted by Triad for the construction of the new parking lot at Simsworth School.
Is that big concrete?
Yes, sir. And in the long run, as far as the life through maintenance, it's not that much more money to do concrete versus asphalt.
Always could have got a bid in lower than we had anticipated.
Yes, sir.
I saw you before. Okay, motion by David Galat?
Second.
Second by Ms. Linda Henderson?
I do have a quick question.
Okay.
Can you just briefly tell us what the difference between the base bid is and the alternate bid?
Asphalt versus concrete.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And this low alternate bid, they realize what they're doing.
They do.
We questioned them.
Big difference. Big difference. All right. Any further questions? We have a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, we had no motion in a second. That's right, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries.
They can jump out for them and ask a question.
Moving into new business. Again, more policy manual revisions and deletions.
Yes, sir. On Thursday, when you were sent this package, you were sent three policy revisions, school and student safety, emergency crisis management, and then student fees, fines, and charges, along with one policy deletion on threats of terrorism and violence. As of 10 o'clock this morning, there was yet another revision to Policy JS, student fees, fines, and charges. That policy was just a three or four words that were tweaked, and that new revision is in your portfolio. So the one that you received in the mail last week, that you received an email, has been changed by fourth law. So your new revision for that is in your portfolio. And so along with this policy, you will see that you have a list of approved fees that we're asking you to approve to study for next month. And also, we've given you a copy of a student fee hardship waiver, which is now a requirement to go with this policy. It isn't part of the policy, but it's part of the procedure. So I thought you might want to see a copy of that. So if you have questions about any of this, please call me as you look at it. and need any clarification on anything.
Anyone, please do your homework, if you have any questions, please call Ms. Bashan on this item. All right, name Ruston High School Track Facility, Mr. Ricky Gere.
Here we come tonight to recommend, ask you to recommend naming the Ruston High School Track Facility after Coach Dave Anderson. It would be designated to be Dave Anderson Track and Field. Just to give you a little background on Dave, he began to teach at Ruston High School in nineteen ninety-one, served as a head track and cross-country coach for there for twenty years. He presently is coaching in Bentonville West High School in Centerton, Arkansas. While he was at Ruston High, he's the only coach in the history of Louisiana five-a classification to win state championships in boys' cross-country, girls' cross-country, girls' track and field, and boys' track and field. He was named Louisiana Sport Rider Association Coach of the Year four times, twice nominated for National Federation of High School National Coach of the Year. In his twenty years at Ruston High School, he established, his Ruston High School athletes established thirty-nine out of the possible forty-two school records. He has nine former athletes that went on to play in the NFL. Five Ruston High School athletes under his tutelage competed internationally, representing USA Track and Field in Canada, Cuba, Finland, Italy, and Australia. Community members and resident Ruston High School alumni are supportive of this effort in naming the Ruston High School Track and Field facility after Dave Anderson. I'd say that I coached with Dave there for quite a while. He did a lot of things, I was a girls' basketball coach, did a lot of things to help my athletes in the offseason, so. But would ask you to, we recommend that y'all do this.
Questions from Mr. Gere? Comments from the public? I know we've got some eager people back there, they won't say anything or not.
No, it wasn't.
Trot and I and Lois are here to represent a number of people who've asked us to support your recommendation. Lois refers to it as Anderson's Army. So many, many athletes are in favor of this.
You know, Will had two sons that ran track and then went and played college football, and both of them were called out almost the first day of college practice just to do the stretching and the warm-ups because they know how to do it right. Dave had taught them right. Of course, I have a daughter that went to the state track meet all four years with Dave, and he was, he was great at coaching the kid, but he was a great motivator for the kid. I have a quick story if I could indulge everybody just for a minute. I think it's a neat story with Dave. Because my son Jack was mainly a football player, and he ran track just for the speed and balance and staying shape. In his senior year, he's running the high hurdles. Again, never was any pressure just to be out there. Well, he wins every race all the way to the regionals and he's at the state meet. And of course, there's beginning to be a little bit of pressure now at the state meet. And we drive up, we get down to Baton Rouge, and Dave, we find Jack, and he's talking with Dave. And Dave's kind of pointing his finger at him, and you can tell by Jack's body language, he's mad. He's aggravated, and Dave walks away, and we ask Jack, so what's going on? And he said, get him away from me, I don't want to talk to you. And he loved it, I don't want to even see him anymore. Well, Dave had told him there was a boy running the hurdles in New Orleans that had the best time in the state, and he told Jack, second, I'm counting on you for second. You cannot win this race, I'm counting on you for second. And he told Jack that about three times, and he was so aggravated by the time he got to the race, he ran the best race he could. He was ahead of the boy from New Orleans over the third hurdle. The boy from New Orleans fell, he pushed himself so hard, he hit a hurdle, fell into Jack's lane. Somehow, Jack got over him and finished the race and ended up coming in third behind two guys he beat in a race. So I told him, you ran the best race of your life, but you came in third. But Dave's motivation, and I've told some other dads that, and they've actually used that with their kids, I'm counting on you, just come in second, come in third, that'd be great. And it takes all the pressure off and the kid motivates himself. But that's just an example of Dave, he knew exactly what he was doing all the time. He was a lot of fun at Ruston High.
All right, appreciate the comments and support. We only let stories be told by former board members.
I do have one comment, Mr. President. Three of my favorite people in the whole world are here supporting Coach Anderson. And I was fortunate enough to be at Ruston High when Coach Anderson was there. He had Jack and I, when Jack was a sophomore and I think I was going to be a junior, and we were the rejects because we were football guys that just wanted to try and get faster. Jack was able to get faster, I was not able to get faster. But I think that was on me, not on Dave. And so when I have three people that I really respect in the back of the room, and this makes this part of it a little difficult for me. I think there's a, I think there needs to be something said that, when will we stop naming things after people? And lots of people do lots of great things, and a lot of times, they do those things with the help of others. And I just hope that we, as a board, make sure that we are being prudent and diligent and making sure that we don't carry this too far. Because once we open the gates for it, it will continue. And there's lots of great teachers that we're not naming classrooms after. There's lots of great principals that we're not naming high schools after. And I'm a guy, I'm a football guy, I'm a Ruston High native son, quarterback, coached there, played there. I love that place, but it's Ruston. It's not about any individual coach, it's about all the families, all the kids, all the community members, the band, the cheerleaders, the whole community being behind something. And as much as I love Dave, as a person and as a track coach, I just wanted to share that with you guys, that I hope that we can be mindful of that as we move forward in this process.
I like that, that's good.
Thank you. Any other comment, question? We have a motion. I think they went to sleep. All right, motion by Debbie Abrams, second. And that's Susan Wiley, all those in favor of naming the Ruston High Track Facility after Coach Dave Anderson, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. All right, thank y'all very much. Request permission to advertise for bid for purchase of new school buses, Mr. Rick Casey.
Coming to you guys with a little different request this year than we've had the past couple of years. The past couple of years, we've bought buses with state contract. That was because we had a situation that happened with one of the, one or two of the vendors that we were using of the three vendors in the state that had, we had bought products from them that I felt like were subpar at the time, where we ended up buying buses that ended up parked on our lot because of a factory issue that couldn't be resolved, where we tried to get parts to fix those things that were brand-new buses, and they were on back order nationwide. So that kind of thing kind of said, left a bad taste in my mouth, so we said, let's get something quality that might cost a dollar or two more, but at least we won't have it parked on the lot, looking at it and not be able to use it. That was two years ago. In those two years, they responded to our dealings. So with that in mind, as well as trying to be prudent with the use of our funds, keeping in mind our budget situations that we've had in the past years, we want to return to the bid process. And so we're asking for permission to advertise for bids for five new buses instead of going through, state contract is still there, but we want to be prudent with the use of our funds. And I think the best way to do that with Ms. Duke's counsel is to, is to go back to a bid process and make sure we're getting the absolute, we're getting what we need, but for the absolute lowest price we can get it for. And so we're asking you guys to give us permission to advertise for bids for those five buses.
Questions on this item? I know we brought this up in the past, I just, air conditioning, I know they're super expensive.
It adds ten thousand dollars whether you're retrofitting or doing it from factory, and that's just your upfront cost. There's a honeymoon period, we're told, of twelve to fifteen months where everything's glorious, and then you'll have to employ another employee to work on nothing but air conditioners. Which, if you're up for that, I'm always a servant of the board. So if that's the way you guys want to go, I can say, just you can do the math in your head. If you added ten thousand dollars, that means we're probably looking at three and a half buses versus five right off the top because of the money figures. But keeping in mind that also that puts us in line for having to have an extra employee with benefits and the whole nine yards once we go that route. But like I said, I'm up for whatever the board's willing to do. I will point out some obvious, other obvious cons to the idea. You all are, most of y'all guys are parents, and I am as well. I have four kids of my own that went through the school system. If I do get those three and a half air-conditioned buses, how do I decide where they go? Who rides on them or who gets to drive them? You know, and those don't go immediately to the fleet because we put the new ones where we carry the kids to long distances, like, you know, ballgames and things like that, they're in New Orleans where we got to have reliable transportation. So they don't even get to the fleet for two years, and then by then, you know, we're still kind of in the same boat. Who gets those buses for the field trip or for this trip or that trip? It kind of sets you in a motion that you're going to have to make a lot more decisions along the way, which I'm still up for too, if you guys are. But just, you guys tell me what your wish is and I'll do whatever we need to make it work.
Do we have any buses now with air conditioning?
Special ed buses are always air-conditioned, but no others are.
I can say, when I was transportation supervisor, we had special, air-conditioned special ed buses, and you do pretty good for about a year and a half. You know, a bus is long and flexible, and you got those freon lines, and they move, and they break. Maintenance is pretty serious on them. Of course, some school systems have them, but it does require a lot of maintenance.
Is there any alternative to air conditioning, some kind of fan system that, I mean, obviously, I know you can hold the windows down. Is there anything that helps other than air?
We added to our spec sheet, you know, the white top idea that supposedly gives you some advantages. I don't know that I've ever seen any research on that, but, you know, a white top versus a yellow top. But so we're doing what we can, you know, within the confines of not trying to take on a big expenditure to try to influence the temperature of the buses as much as possible.
Put your big evaporative.
I would love to have a bunch of shade trees planted out at the bus barn in that area, and that would give us something to park under, but I'm afraid a tornado would have probably taken those out by now. So, but, yeah, I mean, honestly, it's, short of air conditioning, you really are limited with that kind of idea.
Everything, everything's double on the bus, one air-conditioned system, one two.
That's right.
You got to have two, two compressors.
So the ten thousand covers two?
Two condensing units, it's dual.
So what about if we even tinted the windows, would that help?
They do, some have tinted windows standard, and then some, we pay that. If the board wanted, we can add that to our specs as well. All of those things, I think, well, just thinking, you know, logically. When you get on a bus and it's been sitting on the lot for five and a half hours, which is the day, and you come out to the afternoon, when it's the hottest time, even if we were to have air conditionings and you were to get on there and start that bus, most routes are thirty to forty-five minutes. By the end of the forty-five minutes, even with air conditioning, it might be more comfortable in the bus. But not for the first thirty minutes or so. So I really think it would have negligible effect to what we're doing.
What you're stopping and starting.
Exactly.
I drove one, of course, it's been fifty years ago.
We need you back.
Can you start in the morning?
Anyway, any other questions, I'll be happy to. And like I said, whatever you guys want to try or get into, I'm up for. We just, we'd love to have permission to bid for whatever, whatever we decide we want to get.
I appreciate that. Okay, any further questions?
I will be, we have permission to advertise.
Advertising for five new buses.
My second.
Motion by Martha Andrews, second by Hunter Smith, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries.
Thank you.
Get after it, Ms. Casey.
Also, one more time, I'd like to express my appreciation to the board for the fourth thought that all of the boards have had. Ms. Duke can bear this out, our fleet is one of the youngest ones in the state, but that's because we proactively have bought buses every year with the money that's available and dedicated to that purpose. A lot of districts have used that to pave other potholes in their finances, and therefore, they have to buy twenty and twenty-five every ten years. Well, once you buy a certain number, you got to replace that number over a certain number of years. So you set yourself up in a cycle that's hard to repeat. But the wisdom of these boards that have been here at Lincoln Parish has got us in a system, in a situation where we can continue to have the youngest fleet that helps us in the long run with expenses.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. Change order number one on the Ruston High School Light and Pole Project.
Okay, Mr. Law, I think you can do a better job on five, one, two, and three. Trying to explain that to the board.
We're asking for no cost, no day change, change order of, on the pole job. The purpose of it is, originally, we were going to use cages on the poles, and there was a bracket we were going to put on the pole for speaker. The manufacturers come back and offered as a equal, which I think we need to accept. He's changed, the cages are not, now they're using man lifts to change pole lights out and service the equipment as opposed to climbing poles. And so what he's come back and has proposed, and I think it would be benefit to the school board, we had a ten-year standard warranty specified on the poles, the parts, and the labor. But the ten-year part was only on the, on the parts. The bulbs only had a two-year warranty and the labor was only one year. He's proposed, instead of putting the cages on in the bracket, to give us a ten-year warranty on the parts, the labor, and all the bulbs, which I think will be a huge benefit. Automatically, the school will not have to basically put with maintenance on the pole for a ten-year period of time. So like I said, it's no cost change, there's no day change, but I would recommend accepting.
Now for the recommendation on this, any comments from the public, questions, board members?
Ms. Marshall, you ready?
Motion by Lisa Best, second by David Galat, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. Thank you. Moving into reports, personnel. Dr. Lewis?
I'd like to report two thousand eight staff recommendations and one bus operator recommendation.
Is that the shortest report you've ever given? We appreciate that. Any questions? Construction update, Mr. Payton?
Okay, Ron, we've got a few pictures. Like this is at Shula Elementary. You know, we're building a whole room, full classroom pre-k center there, about five thousand square feet. And so it's a one-year job. That, the work that's been done, it started back in March, and there was a tremendous amount of subterranean drainage work that had to be done because all the drainage for the whole school was more or less across that lot where that building is going to be. So they're just about, other than a few catch bases, they're just about through the drainage part. And what you see there are the forms of the grade beams. And the grade beams represent the outer perimeter of the building. And that's where all the load of the building will be. And underneath those grade beams, there are fifty-six drill piers. And they range, they go ten feet deep, and they range in diameter of eighteen inches to twenty-four to support the building. And they're already there, the grade drill piers. He's going to pour the grade beams tomorrow, Wednesday. And then once that happens, electricians and the plumbers come in, in the center part, they're roughing the plumbing, roughing the part of the building, and fill it up with dirt, sand, and then hopefully by the end of October, we're pulling slab. And once we do that, and the slab goes on top of the grade beams, and there are, you can't see it, but there are grade beams, low-bearing walls and grade beams in the interior part of the building too, not just around the outer edge. But once we get the slab, then we're out of the danger zone as far as weather's concerned. So that's, that's where we are on the pre-k center. And hopefully, in April or May, we'll be through the building. And hopefully in April or May, we'll be through the building, and then when school starts in 2000, August 2020, we'll be ready to use it. Okay?
Okay.
Press box. That's the picture of the interior of the press box. The fire marshal's coming next Wednesday. Once that happens, the contractor is just about, other than some of the interior work, they're about ready to move out and hand it over to us. Soon, the countertops, which are not there, they were supposed to be in today. Carpet on the floors, and there's also going to be carpet on the walls. There's, you know, a lot of people, it's real short now, carpet. That, that you see where that vacuum cleaner is, where that hose, that carpet that's there on that partition, that's what's going on the wall to help muffle the sound. Also, notice, the old press box didn't have any of that, neither did it have those glass partitions. You know, you got radio announcers, you got referees, you got coaches, you got a lot of people up there, 10 to 12 people, and radio announcers, opposing team, home team, so it gets, it gets kind of loud up there. And there's a door about midway through there to help muffle some of the sound too. And it actually looks like it's larger, it's bigger than the original press box because of that slanted glass, but it's not. It's inch to inch, it's the same square footage as the one that was there. We were directed by state fire marshal to do that. We could not make it any bigger than it is. So, hopefully, in a few days, we're putting an outside skin on the building right now. It's gray and red, kind of like Spirit Building. They'll finish that up soon. Okay, Ryan, we got the other picture. Now, that's a view from, from the trunk. And there will be a lighted sign there across that, or host there, once we finish. Okay? All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Payton. Crisis plan update, Mr. Timmy Nutt.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I'm not a frequent presenter at board meetings, but I am happy to report on what we're doing in terms of crisis. You know, this is, this is not a comfortable thing to talk about. Part of my job is to dwell on and think about the worst things that could happen in our schools. And you just, you tune into the news, you see on your phone the things that have happened in schools all across the country. It seems to be now on a weekly basis where we've had a tragedy, you know, in a school, and we, our goal is to do what we can to minimize the, you know, the damage done and to try our best to keep these things from happening. The most common emergency situation now is the active shooter, but we have a host of emergencies that we prepare for. Since the early 2000s, all of our schools have had a written crisis plan that is reviewed and modified each year to allow for updates. I guess, you know, we learn from studying things that have happened in other places and try to modify our plans to be as prepared as possible. These plans outline specific procedures for different types of emergencies and anything that we can possibly imagine that would happen at our schools. September the 18th, over in the Title I building, I hosted a meeting with a representative from each of our schools, and we had representatives there from the Ruston Police Department, Lincoln Parish Sheriff's Department, both, both the Lincoln Parish Fire District and the Ruston PD, as well as Mr. Kip Franklin from the Department of Homeland Security. We come together, we brainstorm those who, whose expertise lies in handling emergencies, distribute information to the schools, and we ask a lot of questions. We had a great meeting, and it's the job of the person that was there to go back and brief the staff, and then they update that plan, and that plan is presented to me. As I said, you know, our goal is to be as prepared as possible. We know that some things are inevitable, that they're going to happen, but we want to be as prepared as possible. Something else that's going on is, is we are looking at making some modifications to our main entrances of our campuses so that any person who comes to the campus can be vetted in a way that we can determine that hopefully that they're not a threat to the safety of our students. That process is going to take a while. If you've been on a campus recently, you see that most of our campuses, you have to walk up, push a button, identify yourself, or have someone have a visual of you before they let you inside. When we first started this process, yes, there was, people were concerned, and it is less convenient. You know, the gates at Ruston High School, I mean, there was some pushback for limiting access to people, but these things, this day and age, are necessary in order to try to help ensure the safety of our students. Our schools are required to have drills, fire drills, tornado drills, lockdown, evacuations. They do those all through the year, and those are tracked because we want students and staff to be as prepared as possible. Every school has a designated, at least one, probably two, safe locations in the unfortunate event that a school had to be evacuated off-site, then there is a place that could receive students and staff, and then communication with parents so that we could get those children home safely. There was a meeting here in the boardroom two weeks ago, representatives from the National Weather Service. We talked about, okay, well, it's one thing to have something happen during the school day, but what about when your campus is hosting an after-school event? So, there are now procedures being placed in crisis plans for all of our schools of what to do if there was a, some threat or a weather-related emergency. And we have had several events in the last couple of years where we have had severe weather warnings and having to be prepared for that. If you're sitting at an athletic event in Lincoln Parish, you can be rest assured that someone has an app on their phone, and they're watching the weather, especially during the times of the year where we are prone to bad weather, and that people would be alerted if there is an imminent threat that may take place. Perhaps our best line of defense with all of this is the presence of SROs in our schools. And certainly, you know, we can talk about, we can talk about bulletproof material, we can talk about plans, but our SROs in our schools are certainly crucial to adding to the safety of our students. And I know that you may receive phone calls, and it's so difficult to get into this school now. Well, it's the day and age that we live in, it's necessary that we think about these things, that we dwell on these things, and that we be as prepared as possible. And I just want to provide you that insurance that we are doing everything we can to keep our students and staff as safe as possible. If you would like to see one of these plans, come by the office one day, contact me, and I'd be happy to walk you through what a typical crisis plan looks like for one of the schools. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Nutt?
Mr. Turner. I say thank you for your work on that very much.
Have you decided, or do you know how many doctors and nurses you could get to the hospital and how long it would take in case there was an accident?
Well, our emergency personnel, our EMTs and our fire departments do have a plan in place where they are alerted and they know how long it takes from each of our schools. All of those entities have copies of our plans, and they would be able to tell you how long it would take in order to do that. I don't have that information.
You don't have the information on the doctors and nurses?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nutt. All right, Ms. OneintheD, finances.
Okay, you have in front of you the September sales tax report. I'm glad to report to you that collections for this month compared to the same month last year is up almost 6%, largely due to general merchandise and food store sales. So, we're glad to see that. So, for the year, first three months of the year of collections received so far, we're about even with where we were at this time last year. Okay, moving on to the financials report for the month of August. Now, we are two months into the fiscal year, and what we're showing now for August, we have, let's see, seven maintenance and operating funds that are funded with property taxes, and all seven of those funds are currently running a slight deficit. You can see that on your report. These funds, which is typical, we collect the property type collection starting in the month of December, and then we spend on that, you know, throughout the year until the next property collection cycle comes around, which we do anticipate that happening again, and replenishing those funds in December. Those funds are, have sufficient fund balance to carry those deficits, which is, you know, why we have that balance, that balances in place except for in our five mil maintenance fund. Total fund balances of all funds is right at 30.3 million. This is up from the previous month of July of about 872,000, but it is down from August of 2018, this time, same period last year, by about 4.5 million in total fund balance. Okay, and then, moving on to our health insurance fund report, we do, we did have a large month of claims for the month of August. Now, this report is reported on a calendar year basis, so when you see your year-to-date, this is for the eight months of the year, starting from January through August. The, so, total claims paid, total claims expenses paid year-to-date is about 7.2 million. This is actually a little bit less than what this was this time last year. The biggest change in our year-to-date figure, which we have now deducted to a deficit for this year slightly, is due to an estimate of incurred but not reported claims. It's just a accounting estimate that's made, and we increased those estimated claims that exist that we don't yet know about for this report. So, total claims expenses paid is lower than it was at this time last year. So, year-to-date, I think we're okay, as long, just depending on what future claims come in, but for the month, we did have a huge increase in claims expenses paid, which is due, just due to the normal, well, different cycles of how claims come into us for the month of August.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Duke?
Thank you very much. Mr. Millsburg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two or three things. I too, like mentioned earlier by Ms. Bonilla, appreciate seeing a large number of you at the Adopt a School luncheon today. Had a big crowd there. It's good whenever the public can see our elected officials at those type of events. So, thank you for coming today. We have one other tornado item that we have not moved on yet, and that's the EcoCar building at Ruston High School. The building was destroyed and was declared a total loss except for the slab, so the only question is where we're going to place it. In the process, they allow us to mass, send mass notices in dangerous situations where we just hit a button, text goes out to everybody, school by school if you choose to do that. So, we're looking forward to that. Also, we want to waive to electronically pay for school fees and school lunches, where you just go onto the app. You can download the use of a site that allows you to pay it electronically. So, we think we're behind on that, and we want to move on that to allow our parents to have the convenience of paying just right at home while they're home. So, looking forward to that happening. That is not a fast process. It takes a big long time to make that happen, so we're hoping by January to have a new Lincoln Parish School Board website, plus all of the 12 school websites up as well. Had our first faculty advisory committee, had it yesterday here in this room, and it's always good for me to meet the teachers. Just let me tell you how enthused and excited they are about the possibility of having a $3,000 pay raise. They've gone 10 years, 10 years, and got a $1,000 write pay raise. So, I don't know what the math is on that, Dr. Gilat, but $1,000 over 10 years, it's not a whole lot. And so, it's a shame that some of the most respected, most important, most influential people in our district have to go through that, and what they do for us, I brag on them all the time now, how wonderful they are and where we are as a district. But, the fact is, we need to put our money where our mouth is. And to Mr. Smith's point, I just want to address, nobody likes taxes. I'm the, I am a person who has always been anti-tax in many areas to frivolously spend money, but paying for the safety of our children and paying for our teachers to have a little better pay raise, I know City, Lincoln Parish, there are two parishes right now that are already above us. We lost, I want to say, four or five teachers to be involved this year, and it was because it's like $3,000 or $4,000 difference. But, we want to at least get back on playing field with that, so this will allow us to do that. So, it'll be up to us to make sure that our teachers have these dollars, but we've got to get out and do our part. Superintendent's got to do his part in order to make sure that our people are aware, our people, our teachers are very deserving, our bus drivers are deserving, our custodians, our cafeteria staff, our parents, all need the extra dollars. And so, I would encourage each of you to seriously consider voting for this as that time comes next May the 9th. And then, for the first time this year, and this is because Ms. Batsheen recommended this, we're having a fall break. We have never had a fall break in Lincoln Parish, other districts have. So, October 14th through 16, 14, 15, and 16, we will actually be out of school, the first nine weeks ends, take our three days, and then we come back, and people will ask me, well, is that shortened your school year? Oh, no, you got all of that built in, so the, you got the minutes from year to year to make sure that our kids are getting the instructional, quality instructional time if they need it. So, looking forward to that, and I think it's hope being successful, Ms. Batsheen.
I'm pretty popular right now.
Yes, yes, you are. Yeah, I know. The president's all like that.
All right. Comment from board members?
I have one.
Okay.
This past week, Hunter and I were participants in the Rotary Club meeting that they had, and it was a wonderful experience to see about the EcoCar and to hear all of the presentations that were done there, and those are fabulous students, and I just wanted to say that I enjoyed it. I think, gee, that smile on his face.
Tremendous.
So, I wanted to say, those are some really talented students that really are putting their talents in a good place. So, kudos to them and their teachers.
Two great teachers, Randall Elliott and Dustin Whitlock, just tremendous job, tremendous job.
I want to say a personal thanks to all of you that was in support, your condolences and your visitations, and whoever else you've been to help us say a temporary goodbye to my goddamn graniteroom. I just thank you from the depths of my heart for that.
Ms. Lisa.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, you do that.
Thank you.